Hello, everyone. I am Greg Strange, coming to you live from my kitchen. And I am, for today's purposes, the Chair of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. And I'm joined by Stephanie Danielson, who is our longtime Director of Planning, among other roles in town. And we just wanted to take a few quick minutes today. Since we are proposing five zoning articles at Special Town Meeting on November 30th, we thought, in keeping with past tradition, we would give you a quick rundown and synopsis and explanation of what we've been working on at the Planning Board and what these zoning articles include. So, and just for anybody that was curious, the background here, since my house is rather busy today, I thought I would share. This is a picture, compliments of the Eastern Historical Society of Five Corners District, or of Five Corners, in 1890. And you can see a trolley, which actually used to service Stoughton, Easton, and Canton, which actually was abandoned in 18, I'm sorry, 1909, due to lack of ridership. So hopefully with improvements that we're proposing for the districts, we can bring back the trolley, a little levity there. But anyway, so thanks for joining us, like I said. And, you know, quickly, the roles, you know, the Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Board, we, along with approving certain types of projects called out in our town zoning bylaws, we maintain the zoning bylaws, we maintain and create master plans. And, you know, basically land use, I think it's really important, as do my other board members, to, that local residents have a say in their land use and rules that govern that, in the growth of the town and preserving of open space and of changing of bylaws. And Stephanie, as the Director of Planning, works with us, she works with many boards. She, I think people don't realize how many hours Stephanie puts in, but she not only participates in obviously all the meetings we have, she coordinates our work with, you know, Town Council and other state boards and helps us with adherence to local zoning. She deals with landowners and developers and people who just have general questions or issues with zoning in town. And so we, I've been lucky to work with Stephanie, really, on and off on many different roles in town for about, I don't know, 12 or 13 years now, so.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Not to be too exact.
Right, well, yeah, fifty, yeah, exactly. So, anyway, so, and the process that we take when we do all this, you know, we have, all of our meetings are public, you know, they're always, they're posted on the town's website, they're always on ECAT. In the past, they were open to the public. Hopefully, we'll get back to that someday when COVID passes. But our meetings are still available through Zoom and public presentation, public participation carries on and is vibrant, it's just in a slightly different form. So leading up to some of these articles that we're proposing at Town Meeting this year, are really based on a few things. Going back to the master plan, the Envision Easton Master Plan that was written by and for the residents of Easton, as well as many of the staff members in Easton, about five, five years ago, Stephanie?
Yeah.
And that, you know, what's a master plan? You know, we, over a period of fourteen or fifteen months, held dozens and dozens of meetings and info sessions and reach out and surveys and to answer a myriad of questions, everything, you know, from land use and affordable housing and historical preservation, open space preservation, where would, where we would like to see areas grow, where we would not like to see grow, you know, what would people in town like to see happen, you know, in Easton? And of course, everybody would always prefer that that piece of land right next to them just stay undeveloped and fully treated, but, you know, just like the property that they live or work on, landowners do have rights, you know, with their land. So we, we try to craft working documents to allow people to use their land, develop the land, improve their land, but, you know, along the lines of what the town would like to see through all those myriad examples that I brought up, right? So anyways, enough babbling. So we have five articles we are presenting this year, Article 15 to 19. Article 15 is, yeah, I guess I don't need to give the list, we can just start with it. So Article 15, basically, you know, right now, our bylaw allows hand laundering in Queesit Commercial Districts B and C, which is basically is 138 up near, from, say, Stoneforge down to Dean Fuel, that's the Queesit Commercial District for the most part. And it's allowed, hand laundering is allowed in the Village Business District, which is downtown Northeaston, and industrial districts. We are, the genesis of this was to allow a laundromat in Queesit District A, which would help service that neighborhood in Stonehill and would be, I think, a good addition for the town from an economic standpoint and from a sewer standpoint, with the new sewer district down there, it'd be nice to, you know, increase fees that the town can take in. So during the writing of this bylaw, we discovered the definition of bylaw of the laundromat was hand laundry, which was, I think we could say was a bit ambiguous, Stephanie.
Yes, yeah.
You know, so this basically just, what does this change? Hand laundry to laundromat and adds it into Queesit Commercial District. So pretty, pretty cut and dry. I don't know, Stephanie, do you have any, anything you want to add to that, or?
No, the only thing I would add is that, you know, looking at other communities, they definitely had laundromats as a use. Some of them had laundromats and hand laundry laundering. So again, it just added confusion as to what was really meant by a hand laundry. So this clarifies that as well as allowing it in the Commercial District A.
So, yeah, I still don't know what hand laundry is.
I think once upon a time, people had their laundry hand washed by others.
That's true, I guess. I just would have thought that predated zoning, right?
Yep.
So that's Article, whoops, that's Article 15. Next, we have Article 16. And this is to allow, by special permit, which would be granted by the Planning and Zoning Board, mixed use in the Village Business District. So first off, the boundary of the Village Business District, which you can see in the map that Stephanie has up, it's basically downtown Northeaston. If you see that sort of triangle of roads, that is the rockery, where the hand icon is. And then that, that's Main Street traveling left to right. And basically, the district on the left end, which would be the western end on this side, includes the 66, 68 Main Street, which is the old bank building across from Oaks Ames Hall and the two buildings to the left of that. It skips over the gas station and then picks up everything on the northern end of Main Street down to.
Shangri-La.
Shangri-La, thank you, the salon on the corner of Main and Mechanic. And then across the street, starts at the building, and you think, everybody knows the sort of building that has seen better days, but it, on the corner of Main and Williams, includes the duplex house to the left of that and then travels back to the left on this map or to the west, all the way to the Lincoln Street School, the apartments that Mr. King owns. And also picks up the first two buildings on each side on Center Street. So you can think of Paint, Paint Dust, Paint Rust and Pixie Dust Building and the studio to the left of that and then across the street, Oxford Cleaners and the lot, which is now vacant, where the house was demolished maybe two or three years ago. So as some of you may know, we actually have a lot of mixed use in this district. Mixed use is defined by a mix of commercial, normally typically on the first floor, and that's true in this district, and then residential units above. Right now, all the residential units in this district are apartments, but it doesn't mean, you know, it could certainly be an ownership situation too, if someone were to propose that. Currently, there are, looking at my notes, there are eight buildings, at least eight buildings in the district that meet mixed use. So we wanted to see if we could come up with a way, one of the most important things I thought coming out of the master plan, we're looking to create diverse housing types in Easton. So we didn't, you know, that didn't just mean apartments in a large scale apartment building or, you know, are standalone luxurious, single-family house, you know, priced in the, close to the north or south of a million dollars for young families and for baby, for, you know, for empty nesters. We were looking to create, and just anybody, we were looking to create different housing types, smaller houses and walkable neighborhoods. You know, this Village Business District, as we've seen since Shuffle Works was renovated five or five years ago, we've really had a renaissance downtown and would like that to continue. Part of that is creating some residences, not many, but just some to allow more people to enjoy residing in the area. With, as we know, it's a great resource, resource-rich, architectural gems around there, a lot of open space, many parks, the libraries, and the downtown area. So we looked at many different ways to, many ratios to allow, through special permit. And I should just back up, a special permit means it's not by rights. The applicant would come to the Planning Board and would work with us in creating what they would like to do. This is, much of this district is part, is in the Ames Local Historic District, so there are buildings which need to be preserved and a whole set of rules that govern those. And we would, you know, this is a very important area for the town, so we will, we want to make sure that anything that is proposed meets the character of the town and the scale of the neighborhood and is beneficial to the town. So going through the special permit process allows us to do that and allows the residents to participate in the process. We don't have a lot of old neighborhoods like this and we want to protect it. So that's the reasoning behind that. And the ratio we ended up with was one unit allowed for every 2,500 square foot, square feet of land area. Now, if you think of it, an acre is 43,560 square feet. And if you broke that out, you're, you're looking at, well, wait a minute, we're allowing, you know, many units per acre. But the lots down in this area, the average lot size is about 4,200 square feet. They range, the smallest lot is 1,900 square feet and the largest lot is the Northeaston Grammar Building, which is 132,000 square feet. But you could see, there was a table that we presented, and it's available online, that just showed the ratios and, you know, you're looking, most of the buildings would be allowed to have anywhere from, say, two to five units. There are a couple areas that are larger and based on land area could have more. But again, it would be, it would have to be something that is designed in keeping with the neighborhood, adhering to the local historic districts. So, and it's not like every building is going to do this, but we wanted to, you know, in planning, you have to create a, you have to look ahead and create a set of rules by which people can try to meet the needs and the wishes of the town. So anyway, so that's, that is, I wouldn't say a brief summary, I babbled on a little bit, forgive me, but Stephanie, is there anything I missed or you'd like to add on this?
I'd just like to point out, the pictures that we've included here show Bill's Pizza, which I think it has six units currently. And under the proposal, again, this is an existing use, so nothing will change for this building as long as it continues in its current use. But if they were to add apartments today, it would, it would have one unit less under this ratio. And the same with The Farmer's Daughter, which has four units, but under this proposed ratio, they would have one. Again, nothing changes for those two buildings and their uses because they're existing, but just to give people an idea of what the density might look like.
Yeah, that's a good point, you know, I guess, we were trying to match sort of the density that's there. And so, yeah, that's a very good, very good point. Okay, so next, and really the biggest, the whole reason that I put the old Five Corners picture in my background, that the biggest project the Planning Board has been working on in the last eighteen to twenty-four months is the Furnace Village District. You think, originally, we started it as the Five Corners District, but we changed the name along the way, actually, at the, at the recommendation of a resident that was participating in one of our many public meetings. And the district runs, well, for the reason for this, let me jump back, the purpose for this is to take advantage of the sewer that went in, in no specific order, and to create a walkable neighborhood and to promote, you know, promote an environment that is, can be a little more pedestrian oriented. You know, we're thinking, hopefully, within the next ten years, we will see this stretch of 106 and 123 redesigned with, and built by, to allow sidewalks and, you know, a little more green space in a manatee such as, you know, benches and, and to really help out. As we know, there's a, there's an existing stretch of businesses there that we would like to help stimulate by creating options with their land, such as mixed use, such as different densities based on some of the items called out in the bylaw. And, you know, it's a unique stretch of land. Do you want to, want to put the map up?
Yep.
Stephanie, what's, it's actually, it's not a very large district. So as you can see on the map here, again, left, north is looking up. So to the left, that red area, that is the intersection.
Oh, sorry, I zoomed way too far.
That is the intersection of Highlands Plaza, or do you think we're, you know, we're Target and Big Y are? And that is, we are calling that the Eastman Street Subdistrict. On the opposite end, in that pink color, that is the Depot Street. That's actually Five Corners, what we all kind of call Five Corners, where Stephanie's computer hand was, that's Shaw's Plaza. And this is the Depot Street Subdistrict. The yellow areas in the middle are the Residential Transition District, or those are the, you know, most of the residences that we think of when we go through there. And then just on the north and the middle, a small little blue area, that is at the intersection of Paquanticet Ave and Turnpike Street, I'm sorry, Foundry Street. And that is, if you think of the old Keach Law Offices, the brick building, there's a series of four properties there, I believe, and the, there's a car dealership that are existing businesses, business district, and we're keeping them that way. So we looked at this as a really unique opportunity. Because on both ends, on one end, you have, there's a large plaza and quite a bit of, not vacant land, but, you know, large industrial areas up towards Mansfield. And then as you're traveling towards Five Corners, you know, you go through the beautiful historic area with the, the, some fantastic old structures have survived and the ponds and some of the green space, the Emerald Necklace from the open space of Easton intersects here. And then it picks up again as you get further down towards the subway, the plaza with the Subway Restaurant and the other restaurants there, Maguire's, and, you know, a whole slew of businesses. So we wanted to come up with a way to stimulate the economic growth of this area to help with the Sewer District, the DIF that was passed for the residents in this area last year, and to take advantage of the sewer. And at the same time, we wanted to keep the residential area in the middle. You know, the residents that lived there, it was very important to them to maintain the character of the neighborhood and to maintain it as a residential area. So if you were to read through the bylaw, I think we've done a very good job through an awful lot of work with, you know, and I, with, we worked with some professional planners on this, we worked with, you know, Stephanie and her staff, and we worked quite a bit with the residents. We held many, many public hearings, we did neighborhood meetings, we had 101 sessions, and those continued to this day. And this, I thought this was really a great example of what we try to do with the Planning Board. You know, as I said earlier, I think it's really important that residents have a say in their land use, and it's why I've been on this board for fifteen years. I think it's, it's really important that the residents keep their toe in the water on this because it's the residents that live in this town and, and so, but there's nothing wrong with taking help from professionals and from listening, you know, and bouncing ideas off of folks and looking at what we've done in the past and looking at what other towns do. So in a nutshell, what we're hoping to, what we're hoping we've done is put tools in place here that will allow property owners to expand their uses, add new uses such as mixed use, different types of residences, and different types of businesses. And, you know, I've seen some talk online about this, you know, people might catch one little thing. And, you know, for example, in the residential subdistrict, we're allowing house lot sizes to be 15,000 square feet down from the 40,000 square feet. But it's important to remember that many, many of these lots are already in that area or even less than that. And if you were to look at this, you know, there's, possibly, you know, if, and I don't think this would happen, I don't think every owner's going to go out and suddenly subdivide their land, but even if that were the case, they could possibly add maybe five or six residents to this area. So not a huge number, but again, through the special permit process, that would allow us to ensure that the houses that go up would be sort of in a historical scale. You know, a smaller lot should have a slightly smaller house, not necessarily in total area, but in how it's, how it's shaped, you know? If you look back, some of, a lot of the old neighborhoods downtown would that have three or two, three, four, or five thousand square foot lots? You know, they don't have houses that are full, you know, ten-foot ceilings and, you know, steep roof pitches. They, a lot of old balloon frame houses where the roofs, if you ever look at some of the houses downtown, the roofs start sort of at the midpoint of the windows. So there's lots of ways to kind of keep the scale of the house down. So I think we could, you know, would be looking at creative, creating creative neighborhoods here that tie into the history. There's also a provision in this that allows people, if they keep their historic homes, you know, they could add some units by working with the Historical Commission. So, you know, what we see is, when we drive through here in ten years, hopefully, we see tree-lined streets, which we see, you know, we see sidewalks, we see people going north and south to the, or east and west, technically, to the many businesses. And there are folks who don't need to get into their car, they can walk around this neighborhood. More and more people working from home, that's going to continue post-COVID. That's one thing we've certainly learned through this. And, you know, we'd be looking, there's, if you look into the bylaw, there's provisions for mixed use, there's caps on what can be done. There's, you know, you start with eight and ten units per acre, you can do more if there's an affordable housing component. But again, it's all through special permit. So it really allows the town to take a look at this on a case-by-case basis and make sure the project is, you know, meets the neighborhood's scale that we're looking for in open space and that we don't just create a bunch of, you know, parking lots. We're really looking to create a nice, walkable neighborhood through here. The traffic, we already get 23,000 cars a day here. Many of those are, you know, coming from 495 to 24. It's not based on anything that's going on in Easton, but we might as well take advantage of those cars going through and use traffic calming and create, you know, create a vibrant downtown area. This is a unique experience given the mix of, or a unique opportunity given the mix of commercial and residential. And that's really what we're trying to do here. This is nothing that's being slammed down anybody's throat, we're not going to, someone called me the other day, you know, you're going to put hundreds of units in here. It's not possible, if you, this is a very small area. If you add up the ratios and you add up the lot sizes, you know, we're looking to be able to add some residential units here, but it's, you know, depending on the scenarios, it's not, it's not many, but I think it's enough to help make this neighborhood what we'd like to see it be.
Greg, and if I could just, I'd like to just reiterate some of the points that you made.
Sure.
That targeting this area for economic development and growth has been a long-range plan for the town, not just in the current version of the master plan, but also in the previous addition. You know, the town's been planning and working for a long time to sewer this area so that businesses could grow and be supported. When we did the charrette back in the, let's see, was that 2019? The fall of 2019, 2018, with residents and business owners in the district, they reinforced what Greg talked about, that they really wanted to see this as a walkable neighborhood and connected to the businesses. You have, as Greg pointed out, the two business districts that bookend the residential district. And the zoning is really going to help promote, you know, residents supporting the businesses, but also the businesses supporting the residents living there. Greg also mentioned the public participation in the zoning process. And I'd just like to reiterate that, that there was a large group of business owners and property owners, residents from the district, who not only participated in the charrette to help define or refine the vision of this district, but who also participated in the meetings and provided feedback on the zoning as the Planning Board was developing these proposed amendments.
And I wanted to add one thing, Stephanie, could you put your, your icon? What do we call that? It's not an icon, it's a.
I can't?
You're here, just on Rick Lincoln's project, on the Foundry. One of the things, right, you know, if you're all familiar with the Foundry or the former Foundry.
Yeah, it's right here, sorry.
Which is at the end of Paquanticet, and it's where recently during the sewer project, the contractors stored, you know, much of their overflow soil and equipment. And so developer Rick Lincoln, we've been working with him for, I'd say, over three years now. And he's going through, proposing a project which will have forty-six single-family homes, which will be capped at 1,700 square feet? I think I'm forgetting that.
Yes, yeah.
Roughly 1,700 square feet, two bedrooms. They will be a mix of about five or six really nice New England-style homes, you know, richly detailed in scale. And you can see, if you go, you can go on the town's website, the Planning Board's website, and see the proposal. And part of this, there's going to be a community center, and it's going to be public access. I talked about the Green Necklace, you know, you may have heard of the over 4,000 acres of open space that the town has acquired over the last decades. And a big part of that, or a large crossing of that, including the Bay Circuit Trail, is right abuts this whole neighborhood. So part of Mr. Lincoln's project is to propose an area for public parking for about five or six cars and access to this open space where maybe some old trails could be renovated, new trails could be created, and to just help tie this all together. One of the things we've been trying to do since the master plan is, we, you know, residents were lucky, we have all these, you know, we have this 4,000-plus acres, but many people don't even, aren't even aware of it or don't know where they are. I know, the historical, I mean, the Conservation Commission's done a great job on their website showing, showing what the land is and mapping all the trails. And I think, you know, you see these, and part of Mr. Lincoln's proposal, he's also, for mitigation to the town, he's creating, he's going to be installing a traffic light in turning lanes at the intersection of Paquanticet and Foundry, which, as a resident on Paquanticet, I can tell you, is certainly needed not only from a safety issue, but it will really help out the residents in this area. And he's also giving substantial money towards the redesign of this stretch of road that I touched on earlier. So that's one of the first, you know, pins to drop, if you will. One of the, you know, planning takes a long time, we're at the beginning. Stephanie and I and those that work, and our teams work, you know, we're planners. We don't, you know, what we do doesn't happen overnight, but we try to work when creating a vision based on all the feedback we have and our own ideas of where we think the town would, is, should go, is going, would like to go. And I think, you know, Rick's investment on that site, Rick Lincoln's investment, is a first step to really help stimulate this area. And now that the sewer's there, you know, many of the residents realize the increase in their. realize the increase in their property value and the, you know, uh, the, lots of types of businesses and lots of restaurants haven't been able to come to Easton through the years because of our high water table and our soils, but the sewer really really changes that, so this area is going to go through a substantial renaissance, and what we're, I guess, to sum everything up, what we're trying to do is create a path, create guardrails by which we can keep Easton special, you know, we've been so lucky with all the gifts we got over a century ago, that really make our town so different and special, and we're trying to keep it that way. We're a firm believer that the more thought that goes into the aesthetic and the layout and the design of a project, not just the building, but the whole site, you know, and the amenities, uh, the better it is for the overall success of that because of property values go up and, um, you know, business owners' rents can go up and uses can go up, and that's really what we're trying to do. Um, so, hopefully, we'll have your support on this, and, um, feel free at any point, you know, to reach out to Stephanie or myself, you know, you can, you can reach, uh, all the informations on the town's planning website. And we'd be more than willing to, uh, to discuss with you. Um, so, I guess, I thought this would be a ten-minute tape, huh?
I think, well, Greg, I think there's a lot of good things to say about this zoning proposal, so, um, I think giving it, um, enough attention is
Yeah, this is important, right?
It is, um, and just before we go to the next slide, I mean, there, Greg mentioned the Foundry Site Project, the Sonmel Project here, but there are other sites that have been purchased in the last few years and, um, local developers who are um, looking forward to this zoning passing so that they too can move forward with development that will add to that mixed use and neighborhood character that everyone is looking forward to.
Yep, absolutely, exciting things coming up in this district. And so then eighteen and nineteen, Articles eighteen and nineteen are, um, sort of for the zoning nerds out there.
Geeks, do you want me to explain this one?
Yeah, let Stephanie do these.
Okay, so, yeah, being a kind of a geek myself. So currently, the Table of Uses, which, um, lays out what uses are allowed in which districts, um, has what we'd call traditional zoning uses listed out. And the, um, way that the uses have been defined for the Furnace Village District, the Village District and Queesip Commercial District have been through the Use Table. If we add all those in together, it becomes rather unwieldy. So the proposal here is to divide the table into two tables, a one for traditional zoning in, uh, what people would recognize as your more traditional zoning districts, residential, business, industrial, and municipal. For those who don't know, Elie Mossinary means charitable, and that is the area covered by Stonehill College. That's just, uh, interesting note. Um, then the second table will be Appendix A two, and that's where all the special zoning districts will be listed, their uses will be listed and allowed. It will actually make it much easier for people trying to understand what they can and cannot do, or what types of uses are allowed or not allowed in a particular district, to read through and figure out, um, what applies to that particular zone. And Greg, do you want me to get the dimensional, yeah, dimensional and density regulations, this table has long indicated what the setback requirements are, what the lot requirements are, frontage for, uh, lots within, uh, particular districts. Again, we needed to add that information for the, um, new Furnace Village sub-districts and also, um, for the commercial and mixed-use buildings in the Furnace Village District. In addition to that, the planning board established different regulations for motels and major projects, so those are also listed in this table. So really, this is just an addition of new information to support the proposed zoning amendments.
Yeah, exactly, basically eighteen and nineteen are just sort of a reorganization of paperwork for those of us that work in the zoning bylaw, right, when you think about it, so.
And I'm just going to do a pitch, um, so that people are well aware, the zoning bylaw for anyone who's interested as it currently exists, is accessible through the Easton Town Code. You can find it on the navigation bar on the left-hand side of the Town of Easton website homepage. And if you want to review in detail the proposed zoning amendments, you can find those on the Planning and Zoning Board webpage at, from the Easton Town website.
Great, so I think we've covered everything, is there anything you think we've missed?
I don't think so, again, Greg said this before, if you have any questions, uh, you want clarification on any of the proposed amendments, feel free to give me a call. Uh, my phone number is five zero eight two three zero zero six four one, or reach out to Greg.
I will not be giving out my cellphone. But people seem to find me, so it's all, it's all, you can always, you can always get me on Facebook, though, but anyways, you certainly can get in touch with me through Stephanie. So, um, I want to thank Jason Daniels for, for helping out today, and Stephanie, thank you, uh, I'll give her a eight point five on RoomRater.
Oh, thank you.
And, uh, was that at her house?
I'm assuming that's good.
And, um, so thank you, everybody, if you've stuck it out and watched this long, we certainly appreciate it, and we hope, um, we've answered any questions you have, and I hope we can have your support at Special Town Meeting, um, on November thirtieth, and have a great Thanksgiving, and stay safe, folks.